Right, that's great. Welcome everybody. Thank you very much for joining us today. It's really nice to have you all here on this food network. Some of you were with us last time on the last session where we talked all about how you have adapted to lockdown. So thank you to those who've joined us today. This session is all about collaboration and consortia and we're going to bring in one of my colleagues, Sarah Owens, who's going to talk us through consortia, how you're about setting up one and when might be the right time to think about that. But we're also going to look a little bit at collaboration as well. We're going to have a section on news and updates from some of the social businesses on the call today and have a little look at Christmas trading as well. What's possible there in this situation? And we're hoping to do our next network in January. And that will be on the theme of sustainability. So if any of you are really interested in that subject and would like to talk, get in touch with me. We've got a few people already who would like to be on that one. So obviously today is the 11th of November and it is a remembrance of Armistice Day. We would like to try and mark that at 11 o'clock, but the call is due to end at 11. So I will try and finish it before, but I know some of you would like to talk. And if you want to carry on the conversation after, that's absolutely fine. But we'll just have a little pause at 11 o'clock for anyone who's still on the call. But otherwise it will finish before 11. Okay. Thank you for that. So before we get cracking on the collaboration and consortia side, I'm really happy to have a couple of other support networks on the call to tell you a bit about how they operate. And I think it's really great that we can share what else is happening in Wales, who else is able to support our clients and other intermediary organisations that are on the call today. Hopefully it's good for you to know about them as well. And as we're going through the session today, please put any comments or questions that you have on the chat. We're really glad to have you here and we know how precious your time is. So please make the most of it. Promote anything that you want to. You're very welcome to put in the chat section a link to anything that's going on. And at the end of the session, we'll put you a link there to a padlet that's got the presentation on it and it will have the links to the speakers that have been on the call today and other events that I've mentioned, other support. So we'll send the padlet link out to you, but it will also be posted in the chat. Okay, so hopefully I'm gonna introduce our first speaker Pearl. Pearl is from Food Cardiff. Are you there Pearl?
Borodar morning, I'm here.
Borodar. Okay, so hopefully you can see Pearl. Pearl, would you like to tell us a little bit about Food Cardiff, please?
Yes, absolutely. Thanks for having me on the call today. I'm really excited to see this network of social businesses focused on food kind of emerging. It's really great news. I'm going to talk a little bit about Food Cardiff and our local food partnership in Cardiff. But I do appreciate that people on the call today are from all across Wales. So hopefully it will be relevant to everyone because we're also part of a national organisation called Food Sense Wales, which aims to influence how food is produced and consumed in Wales. So what we're doing in Cardiff, we're looking at what we already know. There's lots of great work happening in other areas of Wales as well. And through Food Sense Wales, we're hoping to build on that. So I'll talk a bit about what Sustainable Food Places is and what Food Cardiff is, how you can get involved if you're based in Cardiff and how you might be able to get involved if you're in another area. And I'll do that in about two minutes. So forgive me for being rather quick with it all. And so Food Cardiff, we're the city's local food partnership and we're one of the founding members of the UK Sustainable Food Places Network, which aims to make healthy and sustainable food a defining characteristic of where people live. And we try and, it's really great to talk on the collaboration call because that's really all about what we do. So we try and bring together people and projects, everyone from local authority, NHS, charities, community groups, businesses, including producers and growers, processors, retailers and caterers all across the food chain. And we try and take quite a holistic approach across these six areas that hopefully you can see on the screen below. And one of them is around a sustainable food economy. So we really want to ensure that healthy and sustainable food businesses all across that food system are really at the heart of our local economy and promoting them. And really embedding it within local policy so that healthy and sustainable food becomes easy choice. And it also creates jobs, businesses and prosperity and regenerating high streets, district centres, other areas as well. And we actually think Cardiff and many other areas in Wales are doing this very well. And this group is probably evidence of this, of lots of businesses involved in food and doing amazing things. But we also know that things can be tough at times. People need support. People might feel you might be up against some kind of big chains and other types of businesses. And especially during COVID-19 scenario, we know that times are quite tough. So we're really eager to get food businesses involved in shaping what we do here in Cardiff, both in terms of influencing strategy. So Cardiff Council published their food strategy last year and there's quite a lot of opportunity, I think, to influence what and shape what that looks like. But also looking at how we can support kind of networking and so on without maybe duplicating. Because maybe there's lots of things already, but is there a way that we can support better? And so just really a shout out to, if you're based in Cardiff and sign up for our newsletter and to get in touch with me if you're interested. We're going to be looking for people across different sectors to sit on our strategy group. So we're developing that at the moment. But also looking at how we can kind of better facilitate the sustainable food economy in the city. And like I said, we're trying to adapt and expand this Sustainable Food Places model across Wales. So there's also Food Vale, who have been doing quite a lot of work with local businesses and they will also have a coordinator in post soon and lots of other areas of Wales as well. So kind of watch this space and thanks for having me on the call today.
That's great Pearl, thank you. And I think I put your details at the beginning, but if you don't mind popping your email, if you're happy for people to contact you. If you don't mind popping that in the chat or under a website or something where you're happy for people to get in touch with you. That'd be great. Thank you. Okay, thank you for that. And that's great. So let's move on now to Gary, who is from Social Farms and Gardens. Hi Gary.
Morning all, Borodar. Thanks for asking me to come and give a short presentation on this session. I guess one of the things that this is about consortia and networks and stuff, and I'm pleased to say that Pearl and I, our organisations overlap very well, support each other. So we're a partner with Food Sense Wales's work and also we're supporting the Cardiff Edible Growing Network, Grow Cardiff and Edible Cardiff and all the consortium that are involved in that. So I think that's really key to part of my job, I think, today is to sort of join up some of the dots that are already there so that people are aware of what's going on. But quick introduction to me. I'm the Wales manager for Social Farms and Gardens. We're a UK-wide network. We've got offices in Northern Ireland, in Scotland, right across England and then in Wales. We've got three offices in Wales, Bangor, Newtown and Cardiff. So we're quite well geographically spread across Wales. We've got eight members of staff covering Wales, which is great. We're primarily Welsh Government funded. So a lot of our money and a lot of our work is done with the support of Welsh Government and trying to address some of their key aims and their key targets and stuff. But we're also connected to the European network of Social Farms and Gardens as well. We're one of their key members, which is great. So that's a really wide wide coverage. Our work is around supporting communities to access land and to grow food on that land primarily, but that can be in a whole range of different formats. So in Wales, this sort of map represents some of the activity and there's just over a thousand community food growing sites in Wales. And that pretty much every community has got access to some form of community growing space, which is pretty fantastic. And that ranges from allotments. We've got 500 community gardens across Wales. We've got 67 community orchards across Wales. We've got 42, what we call CSA's, Community Supported Agriculture Sites operating across Wales. We've got 23 incredible edible networks or movement sites across Wales, part of the wider incredible edible UK movement. A lot of our work is around policy, policy support, policy development and challenging policy. So Social Farms and Gardens is a member of quite a few task and finish groups for Welsh Government. We sit on cross-party food groups. We sit on horticulture task and finish groups. We sit on controlled environment agriculture task and finish groups. But actually, we're also now working more with local authorities directly and Pearl mentioned around Cardiff's journey towards a sort of sustainable food plan. We're just about to begin working with Swansea and I see there's a few members of the ones that will be connected with in Swansea. And we've supported Monmouthshire over the years, who are probably one of the leading local authorities in Wales, doing really progressive food policy development and access to land for community use. And we're trying to roll that out further into all corners of Wales, into all local authorities. But we're also connected actually to Social Business Wales. I'm a mentor for a couple of projects that take support from Social Business Wales. I'm a Renew mentor, a Community Housing Cymru mentor, enterprising solutions mentor as well. So I know I've connected to some of you already and Alex, that's going to give a brief update. Adam and Alex and I have done a bit of work together recently as well. Current areas of focus for us in Wales at the moment are around almost that shift in food technology and what could be possible. So we're doing a controlled environment agriculture pilot project at the moment. We're developing three new community-based technical digital food growing solutions. They're being rolled out this year. So it's pretty rapid. It's Foundation Economy Challenge Fund from Welsh Government. And we will have some operating sites before the end of March next year across Wales to test new models of growing. And I think that's part of climate challenge, sustainability, tips into sort of food health and nutrition values and all those sorts of things. We're also focusing on cementing our orchard network. So actually bringing those together. And I guess one of the other things that we sort of need to be aware, there are even behind us, there's another half a dozen or so networks, particularly around the production side. So there's a CSA Network UK, there's an Orchard Top Fruit Network, there's a Sustainable Horticulture Network and things like that. So we need to work out as this journey progresses with this food business group, how we make sure that those networks are connected into and accessible to people within it. But happy to take questions. I'll drop my email in the chat box as well and a link to the website. I know I've connected up with quite a few of you already, which is great. But yeah, ask any questions that you might have later on.
Okay Gary, thank you so much for that. It's really, really good to know all the things that you're involved in and the technical digital food stuff sounds amazing. And the Orchard Network, everything you mentioned sounds really relevant. So thank you. And thank you to both of you for telling us about that. So briefly, I know it's hard to get everything you do into a nutshell, but thank you. And but I know that we've got other people joining the call today or from other networks as well. Please get in touch with me. And you know, at the next one of this in January, we can hopefully give some of you a spotlight. Okay, that's great. So I'm going to move on now to bring in my colleague Sarah Owens. Sarah, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, George. I'm here.
Brilliant, brilliant. Okay, so we're gonna, the focus of today's session is about collaboration and consortia. And Sarah's our specialist at the Wales Crop Shift Centre and Social Business Wales, consortia specialist as well as other things. So thanks for joining us today, Sarah.
Thank you, George. It's really clever to join the network because I couldn't come to the last one, which I was really gutted about. So I'm really pleased that I've been able to come today and hearing about the different networks that exist and what is going on is so exciting. So yes, it's hugely exciting. So hi everybody. I'm Sarah Owens, as George said, and I work for Social Business Wales as a business advisor. Consortium and collaboration is one of my specialisms within the team. And I sort of work within the South West area, so predominantly around Pembrokeshire and Keridigem, which I think is some of the best areas in Wales, but I'm not biased or anything like that. And so what I'm going to do today is I'm going to give you just a brief overview really of of consortia, you know, hopefully I'm not telling you all how to suck eggs. I apologize for that. But it's just the basics. I just want to talk about the advantages and a few examples of what exists, whether they are in a formal or informal collaborations and then to talk about, you know, how strategically it can help an organisation grow. As I say, I'm not going to get into anything in detail. So I'm hoping that if there's any then interest from this that we can get, we can get together and look at this in more detail. So George, do you want to bring on the next slide? There's some, I know we've got Alex here from Superbox, which Alex is going to tell us about that collaboration. So I won't talk about that. But George, do you want to mention something about Cadwyn Ogwinn?
Yeah, so it's just to recap, we won't talk too much about collaboration because we've got Sarah who's going to focus on consortia. But I know in the last call, we talked a lot about how businesses come together during lockdown and really work together feeding the community. We had so many examples of that, which was so inspiring. And I just picked out a couple really. We talked about Cadwyn Ogwinn and they'd done that shop front to bring together local producers and they were doing electric vehicle deliveries. And I know that South Wales Food and Drink has been set up by the team behind Uplands Market and Urban Foundry. I think we've got Mike on the call today who's done the Room to Grow project. So maybe that's something you could tell us about another time, Mike, because that's amazing as well. And I've just heard today about, last night about another collaboration between Coffee Company and Fairdo's here in Cardiff. So hopefully Ellen is here and she's going to tell us a bit about that in the news update. But I just wanted to bring Alex in from Superbox because I think they've been working really hard to bring in local producers as well. Are you, are you there Alex?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, you sound like you're coming in. Can you tell us a bit about how you've been working on this at Superbox?
So we, yeah, we've reached out to a few different organisations. If we're talking about collaboration. We've recently partnered with the Nurture Centre, another local social enterprise. As they were, they've seen a big decrease in income over the lockdown period. So we were able to, they were able to provide us with the space to build a bespoke recipe kitchen. And we were able to provide them with some rental income as well. So it's a good mutual benefit collaboration. We've recently asset locked with Incredible Edible Carmarthenshire. We've reached out to, these are all social enterprises. Reached out to Bank Organics, who was on the call last time regarding delivering a supply chain of vegetables. And most recently, we're quite excited about, which we just got confirmed yesterday. So there's a foundational economy project here in Carmarthenshire, which is looking at food procurement across the public service board. So we've collaborated with myself and Simon Wright from Wright's Food. And we are collaborating to deliver on the expert supply advisor role as part of that project. And I think it's a, I personally think it's a shining example of how the public sector, private sector and third sector have now come together to deliver some real action on developing a local food on the local plate here in, across the county. And hopefully we can create a model that can then be replicated across different counties and see some real change and support for our local suppliers through the large budgets that county councils have within their food procurement. And yeah, just I suppose future collaborations going forward, we really want to pull in on expertise and match with projects to deliver combined skills, learning and training. Because food is such a wide-ranging subject. We obviously, we know about recipes and meals and healthy foods. But to deliver that, that whole food chain approach, we need to collaborate with other organisations. So we can work in tandem to achieve the goals that I'm sure we're all looking for, looking to achieve together. So that's just a brief update.
That's great, Alex. Thank you. And it sounds like the perfect example of collaboration, as you've said, with your advisory role. Okay. So Sarah, let's go back to your discussion on consortia then, when that kind of relationship could evolve into a consortia.
Alex, that was really, really interesting. And I'd be so interested to learn more. I'd spoken to Simon about that collaboration previously. And so it'd be really interesting to learn about how it's progressed. So thank you for that. So what is a consortium? Basically, a consortium, it comes from the cooperative world in reality. And but it is an organisation that is owned and controlled by the people or organisations that use its services. So basically that is, it is, there's no external forces that own or control this. It is all about the members and the people who are involved with that, in that organisation. That's why it is so such a good vehicle for this sector in particular. So what it's doing is it's primarily providing services to its own members. So you could have, you could have a collaboration of quite diverse organisations within your group. But they will be supporting and helping each other to produce an end goal, which is of benefit to everybody. So the other interesting thing about a consortium is that the members of it can range from quite diverse people. So they could be self-employed people, sole traders who are operating just by themselves. But they also can be limited businesses as well. And also social enterprises who are limited businesses chucked into that mix. So it can really be something quite interesting because everybody brings something different to the table. Next slide please, George.
Sorry, it's coming. It's a bit slow to react, let me.
No, it's technology.
Or maybe not.
Oh, there we go. Fab. Thanks, George. Okay, so here are some of the opportunities. I'm not going to go through the whole list. We can share this presentation with you. But some of the opportunities that people who have already been potentially in a collaboration or a consortia would be able to tell you about, it's things like shared costs. So a great example of this, if there are things that people, organisations have to buy within a collaboration, if you can all get together and buy these things through that model, you're able to bring the costs down. So an example of this that was not to do with food, but I had a consortium which was made up of IT specialists. So it was individual little parts and things like paper and the hardware. They were able to come together and through that means have reduced costs for the things they needed. And people will probably know organisations like Nisa Stores. Nisa Stores are made up of Corner Shop, which is owned by Mr. and Mrs. Jones or Mrs. Jones and her daughter. These all came together as part of Nisa so that they could take advantage of bulk buying and then reduce, again, reduce costs on the ability to bulk buy. And some of those organisations as well have then benefited from a brand coming under the Nisa Stores brand. So that they look as if they're part of a, you know, well, they are part of a larger organisation, but they can benefit from that. And within work I've done through creative industries, for instance, you've got a lot of people who maybe they'll work on their own, they could work in their sheds at the back. And what they tell me is that working as individuals can be sometimes quite soul destroying in that, you know, to be creative, sometimes you need people to bounce ideas off. Well, this way has created quite a few collaborations and consortia through people of this, you know, of these people coming together. But it's also about things like sharing responsibilities and sharing risks. So you know, rather than having to take some large decisions on your own, this is a way of actually sharing those decisions and being able to, you know, share any issues that you have as well. So and a really good one that's on the bottom there is about inter-trading. This is within a consortium, one of the main things is that there can't be any competition. And so therefore, inter-trading is something that the cooperative world does a lot of. And that is a way of sharing the, sharing the the wealth and being able to support each other. George, next slide please. So do you want to talk us through Callum Wen? Callum Wen is actually an old, an old client of ours. But people will know Callum Wen, they're very well known. But they are made up of organic farmers who came together as a way to be able to look at how they could get rid of their excess milk. And so, you know, they produce lots of different types of products now related with milk. But they use it as a marketing brand as well. That's one of the ways that you can, you know, utilise things. It's just, it could just be a marketing tool to market your shop fronts as, as George is going to talk about later. And I don't know if we've got anybody from the Welsh Perry Insider Society, but that was a consortium that was set up by my colleague Paul in the beginning, which brought together some apple farmers to help their organisations to look at different ways that they could increase added value to product. George, is there any there that you want to comment on?
Oops, sorry. Sorry, it's gone the wrong way. So you may, along with Callum Wen, you may also have heard of the cheese farmers at the bottom there. It's actually called South Carnarvon Creameries and it's one of the biggest cooperatives in Wales. It's a collaboration of about 160, again, dairy farms and their cheese is very well known and it gets exported to lots of different countries. So you know, export is another route that you might choose a consortia for. And again, the Welsh Perry Insider Society, sorry, they were due to join us, but something's come up for them today. But I know at the moment their focus is trying to find markets for the excessive Welsh cider. So that in their own words, they're trying to tackle the Welsh cider lake. Now, you might remember last, if you're on the last call, we were joined by Ang Harrod from the Y Valley Producers, which is a recently formed consortia, which our colleague Branwyn worked on. And again, they came together just to market their products where I think there wasn't an existing market or anything. So they did it themselves and formed a consortia to do that during lockdown. But they're all really busy at the moment, getting ready for Christmas. And then the ones at the top we've put in is just to sort of bring your attention to, there are some really big organisations out there. There are consortiums. So this Spectrum one is a purchasing partner for care homes and they partners with big organisations like Breaks. You may have heard of Breaks, who I think are also consortium themselves. And then the FPC is the Fresh Produce Consortium, which is another UK-wide one that represents growers, but also deals on importing matters as well. that represents growers, but also deals on importing matters as well. So it was just to give you really a flavour of consortia that exists already. As Sarah said, the Nisa Stores, the Best Western Hotels. Okay, shall I move you on then to your?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine, George. Thank you. So one thing I didn't want to do today really is to talk about the model, the different models, because I don't want to get into that sort of part of the discussion as yet, because I think that looking at the models comes much further down the line for looking at collaboration, because the setting up the consortium, the beginning of it is probably one of the most important parts, because you need to get the structures of your decision makings correct before you kind of get to the end of actually creating something. So but what I wanted to talk about though is, you know, some key strategic drivers for forming consortium. Why do people come together? When we started this work back at the centre, which was back in 2011, we were looking at the small wins initially as to how consortia could help the Welsh SME market to become stronger, strengthen numbers is, you know, is one of those phrases that people talk about. And then with an end goal of looking potentially at tendering opportunities. But there are some easy wins that you can get to before you get to that point. Things like looking at, as I've mentioned, you know, your purchasing, there might be things like marketing opportunities. But if you've got a strong consortium, and Alex was talking about it earlier, you know, and our collaboration is strong, there is nothing stopping you looking at tender opportunities down the line, which, you know, is a way of increasing your income streams. You know, there could be some sort of diversification out there, looking back at Callum Wen. You know, they dealt with milk initially, but the excess of milk, how could they, you know, add value to that? So it was diversifying from just milk into, you know, products like cheese, et cetera. But for some organisations, it is about just looking at sustaining their current income streams. So it could actually be that they're quite small in themselves. So realistically, it could be that if they partnered up in collaboration or a consortium with somebody else, this could help them grow and sustain those income streams. We've talked about reducing expenditure, but it could be looking at new opportunities. And this is why sort of sometimes Wales-wide consortium work really well. It's about looking at Wales, you know, it's not particularly, we're not big, you know, we seem to know, you know, if you're in specific networks, you'll know everybody in all corners of Wales. So it's about, you know, how do we look at potentially North Wales, South Wales and Mid Wales coming together to form a consortium that is going to benefit the whole of Wales? And this could be about looking at contracts, larger contracts outside of Wales. So, you know, there is huge potential for this, but what you need is to get the actual the collaboration right at the beginning and ensure that it is strong. And things like communication are key to this and consistency is key to this. And it could be about survival at the end of the day.
That's brilliant, Sarah. Thank you. Thank you so much for giving us that overview there. It's really, really helpful. I know Gary has popped a comment in there saying that there's a couple more consortia are Calon Cymru and I think it was Cambrian Markets as well.
Yes.
Yeah. So it sounds like it's a really good maybe vehicle for when there's an opportunity there and maybe linking into some of that legislation around Wellbeing Future Generations Act and Foundation Economy. I don't know if Joelle, have you managed to find any questions for Sarah?
We haven't had a lot of questions. We've had lots of fantastic networking going on, which has been brilliant, people sharing information. Yeah. I just wondered, from your experience, Sarah, obviously trying to identify and approach potential partners for collaboration and consortia can be quite delicate, can't it?
Yes.
Are there any tips really, or anything that you've learnt that's worked well, that you could perhaps share with the group?
Yes, sure, Joelle. It's about starting to think about things early enough. Because one of the key elements of coming together is trust. So as part of that, you know, to get that trust, you need to sort of know each other. And it can be about laying cards on the table. And if you haven't actually, you know, known somebody that long, it's about, you know, can I trust this person with this information? Because it can be very delicate. So it could be, Joelle, about starting with small wins. So it could be, as others have mentioned as well, about informal collaborations initially. So, you know, starting, it could start with a network like this, where you're learning about each other and, you know, and where you would potentially sit within a group. And it is about, and it can be just as simple as, as talking. You know, and simpler talking and listening and just seeing and taking advantages. So that when those opportunities do come along, it's not just about diving headfirst in there and then, you know, there's just too much to do and you could miss something. It's about taking smaller steps first.
Oh, thanks, Sarah. And can you just give a quick recap of the type of support we can offer?
Yes.
Through social business Wales around this?
Yeah, so we offer the broad range of support around the whole of the collaboration process. So we would start with strategic, unfortunately, what we don't do, I always think we should have like a dating app for collaboration, because I think I think that would be sort of perfect really, because people come and say, well, can you hook me up with? And I'm like, hmm, that's something we can't do unfortunately, so I'll get that out of the way. But what we can do then is start with strategic visioning sessions to discuss, you know, the early stages. And there is, there's a process that we would go through. So it's about strategic sessions, we would look at the business planning aspect. We would look at the legal formations. You know, there are different models that could be taken up by consortiums. So it's about which one is best for you. And we can actually put those models together through our New Start team. And then it's about helping support and put things like memorandum of understandings, any legal documentation that is required around, especially around contracting. So it's looking at things like that. So and then there's the after support as well. So, you know, if there's ways that things you want to do, looking at HR policies and anything you need, because when looking at tendering, there's a lot of documentation that needs to be in place. So it's just making sure that all the ducks are in the line, so to speak.
Oh, that's brilliant. Thanks, Sarah. I think that's it for now, but if you do have any other questions, please pop them in the chat function. And we can always get back to you. But I think really COVID-19 has disrupted all the markets, hasn't it? But it's also given us the opportunity for lots more collaboration and consortia and working differently, hasn't it?
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Yeah, and it
Actually, hopefully, you know, we could get a collaboration out of this. So, you know, as Joelle said, please contact us and we'd love to speak to you more.
Yeah, it sounds like there could be opportunities there, particularly for maybe like college leavers to work jointly where they've got different skills to bring together, like maybe wedding businesses, that kind of thing, who could collaborate small businesses. So it sounds like lots of opportunities. So please get in touch with Sarah if you've got any more thoughts on that afterwards. That would be fantastic. Thank you so much, Sarah.
Thank you, George. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. Right. So just move on now to the kind of news and networking session. Just bear with me. Right. Thank you. So just a couple of updates really from us. And then we'll bring in some of our clients to update on what they're doing. There's, I don't know if you've heard of the Kickstarter programme, thought this might be relevant for you. I've put a link to it in the pamphlet that you'll get the link to. It's a UK government programme, which is basically to incentivise employment for young people, all the details beyond there. Don't be put off by the fact that you, there's a certain number of jobs that need to be created, I think it's 30 jobs for 30 people, but there's ways to collaborate on this as well. And there are organisations like WCVA and Coalfields who are acting as a pool. So if you did want to have a, create an opportunity for a young person to work for you, your organisation does have to pay the wages upfront, but then you're reimbursed by the government, I think, like five weeks later. And so that could be, you know, a good way to create employment and have someone help you in your business. In terms of useful events for you that are going on. Right. I haven't got the dates at hand, but I'm hoping that someone can post the links in the chat for me. Kowain, who you, I don't know if you remember, they came in on our talk last time. They're putting on some useful events at the moment. And one of them is a webinar on if you want to start a subscription business. So this is in a similar vein to what Alex is doing with Supper Box. If you're interested in a subscription style food business, you know, combined technology and food, it's obviously a growth area. Then they're doing a webinar on that in November. I think it's with Mindful Chef, so, sorry about that, Alex. And then NatWest are doing something similar to that, another webinar. Again, this is in November, towards the end. And we'll try and put the link in the chat for you. This one is with the founder of Just Eat. So again, you know, tech and food is obviously an important area for us to consider. And then also I found recently, if any of you've been to or been part of Food Matters Live, there's a lot of really interesting content on there. And I listened to a podcast recently that's really good called Spoon Fed. So I'll put a link to you on there. Again, it kind of crosses over with sustainability, which we're going to talk about in January. So we'll come on to Christmas trading shortly. And again, in that section, I'd be really grateful if you'd share your ideas because they're only going to help other people on this network and we would just here to help each other. So now the bit you're really interested in is our client news. So we've heard from Supper Box, but we'd like to bring in now Marguerite, who's from Etigwyr to talk about their business. Marguerite, are you there?
Hi, yeah, hello.
Hi there. Hi there. Tell us about your initiative, please.
So we've established a community benefit society in Denby in North Wales with many different ideas to bring together. But as a result of various impacts of COVID, we're focusing right now on opening a shop offering locally sourced and ethical and refill products. So some of our main aims are associated with reducing food waste, reducing packaging waste, reducing what's going to landfill, but also encouraging circular economy. So that people don't just think the answer is recycling, that they can see that there's other ways. So it's to provide opportunities for people. It's all very well saying people need to change their habits, but if there's not the options available at an affordable price, it's really not possible. So that's what we're aiming to do. And many other elements to do with community cohesion and promoting and supporting other local projects through that and talking about collaboration. We're working with many other groups and enterprises locally. One of which has just turned deaf, providing a huge amount of support, tannards, it's an eco-refill gardening concept that started over COVID. So there's many other groups like that locally that are really excited to be part of this. So yeah, feeling the positivity and the energy and great to be part of a webinar like this and listen to all of the other inspiring stories. And there just seems to be so much opportunity to collaborate. Many downsides to COVID, but I think events like this, webinars like this have providers with a greater platform and more opportunities. So yeah, really excited going forwards.
Oh, thank you so much, Marguerite.
I put a note just in a chat about, before this sort of got going, was chatting with Gary and he visited a group up in North Wales that were producing apple cider vinegar cider and apple juice. If there's anyone else that anyone knows of, we're looking for wholesale suppliers and particularly hoping to work with them on a closed loop system.
Right, that's great. That's great. Yeah. Any calls to action? Please put it all in the chat. That's fantastic. Thank you so much, Marguerite. It's really nice to see that you're so positive in this really difficult time that there's, you know, we're all coming together. And this is where the idea of collaboration came out because it's from the last network. People seem to want to talk about it so much. So that's why we put it on the menu. Okay, thank you. So if you've got any questions for Marguerite, put them in the chat. I'm trying to see the chat as well, but I can't see everything. So if my colleagues Ebony and Joelle, if you see any comments there that are relevant, please bring them in. So now, I don't know if Gareth, is Gareth Jones from Seasonarians here? Because Gareth's got a really interesting project that he's gonna hopefully just give us a tiny little insight to, because the next one on sustainability, he's going to tell us a bit more. Are you there, Gareth?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Oh, brilliant. Yes, I can. I can't see you, but that's probably the way I've got it.
Trying to, I don't know what's happened there. Trying to get my video going here.
Oh, yeah, we can see you now. Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, so just give us a very quick introduction, because I know that you're going to hopefully tell us more next time.
Yeah, so what we set up is a movement called Seasonarians, which is, it's an alternative to being maybe a vegetarian or a vegan. So it's to put a framework around, I mean, there's a lot of talk about eating seasoning locally. But we've come up with a framework to enable you to do that. So to become a seasonarian means, you know, you're going to, you do your utmost to eat seasoning locally. So to achieve that, we've come up with a labelling system, like a travelogue system, to go into fruit and veg shops. So you can then identify where your fruit and veggies are coming from every, every week or every month of the year. So we're collaborating with fruit and veg shops, starting off in Pembrokeshire and we're up into Cardiganshire as well now. And also working, I actually work in the dairy industry, so my background is farming. Working with some local farmers who are maybe retailing milk with a vending machine on the farm, selling their own beef, selling their own lamb. So it's just a way of encouraging people to eat locally, but also to make them aware of where the food's coming from. I think that sort of puts into a
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much. That's great. Thank you, Gary. That's brilliant. And hopefully we'll hear more from you on the next call in January.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks. And the next client or link to a client is hot off the press here. I think Ellen is here. She's just joined us at the last minute. Because I saw this last night and I thought some of you'd be interested in it, because so Fair Dews is one of our clients. It's a social enterprise shop specialising in fair trade goods and they're based in Cardiff. And I'll let Ellen tell you the rest. Ellen isn't from Fair Dews, but are you there, Ellen?
I am, yes.
Hey, hi.
So I am working with Fair Dews at the moment as a freelance consultant, having worked in the fair trade world for the last decade. And this is a story that's sort of been going on for the last 10 years as part of Fair Trade Nation, where we've been bringing farmers to Fair Dews and to schools and universities and businesses around Wales. To help understand that whatever we can't buy locally or make locally here in Wales, let's make sure we're trading on a fair basis. So we've actually managed, despite COVID, to import 6,000 kilos of organically grown fair trade certified coffee into Wales. And it landed last week. And we were initially hoping to bring it into the All Wales Catering Contract of Welsh Government as part of the All Wales for Africa programme and make sure that their procurement is meeting their aims and ambitions. So we've worked in collaboration with Etico, Social Business Network. So they're one of the the most ethical traders in the world. They work, they've worked for sort of body shop and all of that and trying to get sesame farmers and much larger things. And then where it's currently being roasted by Ferraris, who is Wales' oldest roaster. And, you know, while we're going around normal sort of trading structures, we're also we're also really, you know, building in ethics and values and sharing good practice and what we're learning from each other. So we're not going to be able to get it into the contract because the coffee sales have obviously dropped because nobody's in any of the government offices. So we've actually managed to bring a postal recycled package to market. And it was launched and we're just putting a website together now. And every time we're going to be informing people about what being a fair trade nation is all about, how supporting these primarily female coffee farmers to respond to climate change, they're very hardworking. And anything, you know, this should be going with your local Welsh milk. So we look forward to telling you more about why this is probably the most ethical, sustainable coffee brand currently on the market in Wales in the next meeting in, in January. But if you want to buy it, get in touch. I've posted some details and sign up to our newsletter. This is the vice chair of the co-op because obviously fair trade is all about cooperative, working together. Nobody, no, no, everybody owns that one voice. There's no power struggle and we're looking then to hopefully employ young people in Wales to keep this going once we've got this brand established.
That's brilliant, Ellen. Thank you so much. Thank you. And, and the lovely part of that story is that some of our colleagues from the Wales Cooperative Centre have, have been to some of the coffee cooperatives to help with their governance structures as well. So it's really great to see that this coffee is actually here now and fantastic. And that Jennifer there is on the, right on the, on the sticker. That's brilliant. And I'm sure that's, that's going to be helping loads of farmers. Thank you. Right, that's great. So just too quickly, I know we've only got about five minutes left now and until the time that we want to have a pause anyway. Quickly on Christmas trading plans, on, on the padlet, I've put a couple of links to you. I know it's a really difficult time for those who, of you actually running food businesses, thinking about sales. But I, I just wanted to bring up online markets. Couple of examples, there's the We Are Gower one, which is actually closed now to, to new stalls. But they've had like a massive load of people on there just looking as shoppers, about 7,000 members. So another one in North Wales is Grill Food Carnarvon. They wanted to come and talk about it, but they weren't available today. But that's a one-day event, so that's different. And it's on Sunday, the 29th of November. So they are still accepting stalls as far as I know. But, you know, there may be opportunities for you to, to have a go at an online market. It's, it's a very cheap entry level, you know, to have a stall there. And I've even seen things like painters and decorators on there, just advertising when they've got a slot. So that might be something for you to consider. Is there anything else in the chat at the moment, Joelle or Ebony, that you want to bring up? And if anyone else wants to mention what they're doing at Christmas, that would be fantastic. If you just pop in the chat that you want to, we can, we can take your mic off so you can mention that. As I said, the next issue, the next one we'll do is about sustainability. Now, please get in touch with me if you've got ideas for that one, if you, if you'd like to take part. We've, we've got a list already. But also for that one, it will be via January. So I was just going to mention if you want to start thinking now, if you have a cafe or anything about a vegan dish for your, for your menu for January. But also in terms of sustainable highs and lows for the January session, you know, tell us about those so we can bring you in to talk about that. And if you and a network would like to have more control about the agenda or want to take on part of organising this, you know, please get in touch and let us know or put it in the chat. So does anyone want to mention their Christmas trading plans? Right, we've got Ellen there talking about Christmas branded Jennifer's coffee. Sounds good. Anybody else want to, any challenges at Christmas that you would like the network to try and help you with? So it looks like there's no more questions on that one. So I think if anyone's not got any more comments, what we'll probably do is, is bring this all up. Okay, Rachel's, I'd like to make up some hampers of small items, okay? If anyone's got any suggestions, pop that in there, in the chat to, to Rachel. But otherwise, I think we'll probably bring it to a close then. So you've got time to have a, you know, a quiet time for 11 o'clock for the Almstis Remembrance. But thank you all so much for taking part. We really, really appreciate your time. And I really hope it's been useful to you. Thanks a lot.